I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting at the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is six P M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hillman, will you update us on the table file?
Yes, we have several items in the table file. They are all in the consent agenda. We have some additional personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment. There's a leave of absence and one resignation. So that's what we have in the table file tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Okay, moved by Amy, second by Jenny, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item three is our public comment portion of our meeting. I do have one person signed up to give comment, and I have a script that I'll read before you come up. This is an opportunity for residents, businesses, business and property owners, parents, guardians, students, and employees of the Northfield School District to address the board. All comments to the board must adhere to the guidelines set in place by District Policy two oh six regarding public comment. This is not a time to debate an issue, but only for the board to hear your comments. You are prohibited from making comments about specific students, staff, and administrators. The board respects and values input, but when it relates to a specific individual or to a specific matter, this input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, including the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. You will be gavelled out of order if your comments are not in compliance with these guidelines. Please address the board from the podium. After being recognized by the board chair, identify yourself, and if you represent a group. We require that you limit your remarks to three minutes. You are not allowed to yield your time to another person. It is expected that members of the public will address their remarks with civility and respect. Personal attacks by anyone addressing the board are unacceptable. The board has allotted up to a total of thirty minutes for public comment at a regular school board meeting. I will now begin to call those who have signed up to speak in the order in which they signed in. Vice Chair Cory Butler will be monitoring the speaker's time. He will signal each speaker with the time they have remaining at one minute, thirty seconds, and ten-second intervals. Again, please make your comments as brief as possible, but no more than three minutes. And first up is Michelle Martin. Thank you, Michelle, for being here tonight.
Thank you. Um, I already sent an email because I wasn't expecting to be able to come, but a schedule change. So thank you for having me, and thank you for all the work you've been doing, especially regarding the high school project. I know it has been hours and hours and hours and hours, and I so appreciate all of your time and commitment to our students and our teachers. Um, I'm here to urge you to move forward on the reimagine option specifically. Um, I'm so hopeful that you'll, um, you'll choose the academic tower. Um, and because I think that'll help students. I know it'll help teachers. As a teacher, I know that how valuable it is to be in a great space. Um, and I know that long term it'll lower upkeep costs as well, um, which are just going to keep mounting with the current building even with renovations. Um, I think it's smart to move forward now. Uh, I think that the community is ready and that the construction and labor costs are likely to go up um, in the future, and that that will make this an even harder project to do financially. Um, and I urge the board, um, to give it the best chance possible to pass. From what I've been able to glean, I believe that that's to split it into three parts. Um, so that, uh, the, the biggest chunk is under a hundred million dollars. Because I think that that hundred minutes, like, you know, the nine ninety-nine versus ten dollars. Um, but I, I think that that will enable, um, even people who want to support it, but maybe are on a fixed income to have an option that will work for them financially. Um, and then, uh, we can see what the, what the, um, community is able to do in terms of the other, other parts of the proposal. Um, again, I will admit that I have been following it, but I, like, that's my opinion. Um, and re- realizing that there are a lot of details that, um, you all probably know that I don't know yet. So I also pledge that whatever you decide, I will be a hundred percent behind supporting it in the community and doing everything I can to, to share the information with everybody I know and, um, to work to pass whatever levy is, is posted. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. We only had one person signed up, and so we will be moving on to our next item, which is announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I have a few this evening. Uh, first, I want to share that the Minnesota School Boards Association and the Minnesota Association of School Administrators a joint day at the Capitol, uh, will be a week from today, Monday, March eighteenth. So board members have the opportunity to advocate for public education at the Capitol next Monday. Uh, members from both MSBA and MAS A will gather in St. Paul, the network, hear from some of Minnesota's education policy and finance decision makers and an opportunity to meet with local legislators. And so if, uh, any board members, we have a couple of people who've signed up. If anyone else is able to attend and you'd like to, uh, please go ahead and feel free to sign up with Anita, and we'll get your registration paid, and we'll get you the details about the trip, um, for next Monday. A, a few other really student, um, shout-outs here. Uh, the first is, uh, in a very Northfield kind of thing. I'm at the Jazz Band, um, all-district jazz band concert last week. And Ethan Fryer, you know, one of our beloved music teachers says, this is the first time that I've, uh, had this happen in middle school. He clarified in middle school. And so Nathan Hoekstra, an eighth grader at Northfield Middle School, wrote a piece for the middle school jazz band entitled Pure Darkness. And they had the world premiere, uh, at, on March seventh, at the Northfield School District All-District Jazz Band Concert. And Nathan's written quite a few songs, Mr. Fryer tells us, but, uh, this was the first time he had adapted one of his pieces for a jazz ensemble. So, uh, we just congratulate Nathan for doing something in eighth grade that most musicians will never do in their entire career. So an eighth grader writes a piece for the jazz band that is played by their classmates. I think that's a pretty special thing, so we should be very proud of Nathan. We are also incredibly proud of Callie Graber, who I shared the, the last time, uh, had won the Boys' Section, uh, Wrestling Tournament and advanced to state, and Callie is the first girl in the history of the Minnesota State High School League Boys Wrestling Tournament to medal. And so she, Callie took fifth place, and you probably have seen she's been featured for her record-breaking performance by several Twin Cities news outlets and, uh, just really happy to see her and the, uh, her participation in wrestling, uh, just getting the do, uh, the encouragement it deserves. So congratulations to Callie on, on that record-breaking performance. And then it just keeps going. Jake Geiger, uh, was presented with the prestigious Herb Brooks Award at the Minnesota State High School League Boys Class A Hockey Tournament last weekend. According to the High School League, the annual award is presented to a state tournament participant that strongly represents the values, characteristics, and traits that defined Herb Brooks, a St. Paul native who gained international fame as a hockey coach. He was obviously the hockey coach of the nineteen eighty Miracle on Ice team for the United States in the Olympics that year. Uh, the award commemorates the unending influence that, uh, Brooks had on the sport of hockey, not just in Minnesota, but throughout the world. So congratulations to Jake Geiger. That's a prestigious honor. We had Ms. Hockey, and now we have a Herb Brooks Award winner this year. So very exciting for our hockey programs. Mock Trial competed at the state tournament, and we had two all-state participants. So congratulations to Maddie Busman. She was honored as the all-state witness, and Piper Artley was, uh, identified as an all-state attorney. So congratulations to those mock trial participants. And last but not least, uh, the Northfield High School Rock and Roll Revival sixteen debuted last Friday night before a full middle school auditorium. Uh, it's just, you know, two and a half hours of pure joy. And so if, if you can get a ticket, uh, my strong encourage you to attend one of the performances this week. I just think about a hundred and fifty students involved from everything, playing the instruments, singing the songs, dancing, the technical crew that makes sure that's every set, things set. It's truly a professional performance. And so we're just so pleased that our students have the opportunity to perform in this way and gain those really just wonderful skills, the pressure of performing in front of a full auditorium, and that safe pressure. It's just a wonderful opportunity for our kids. So if you have not attended, um, good luck finding a ticket, but we hope that you can. Those are the announcements and recognitions for tonight.
Great. Thank you so much. That's a great testament to those students', uh, family members and teachers. Thank you for sharing that. Okay, item five is our items for discussion and reports. First up is we have the proposed two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five debt service fund up budget. Director of Finance will present the debt service fund budget to us. We're asked to adopt the budget at the May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting. Welcome, Val.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So this is my second of quite a few budgets. Uh, so we'll talk a little bit about debt service and what we're projecting for next year. So just a reminder of what our debt service fund is. Um, it is a separate fund, um, from the general fund that houses the revenue for all of our outstanding debt, and then we make the payments and, um, associated operating costs out of that. Um, that's the only thing that can happen in there. We are required by statute to levy a hundred and five percent of our total debt payments every year, just to ensure that we have enough to make sure we're paying the, um, complete amount. Some of the revenue is also from state aid. So we get a, uh, LTFM, which is Long-Term Facility Maintenance Aid. Uh, we get a pretty substantial egg credit. Um, you might recall a few years ago, they implemented, uh, credit for egg property, um, on some of our, uh, on school district debt, um, that helps that be more affordable for the large acreage. And then there's some other miscellaneous state credits as well. Um, we do have one operating capital and two LTFM bonds, and those are like the middle school roof that we did. Is it two years now ago? Time's running fast. Um, that is a way for us to bond, but have the net, um, impact to the taxpayers be neutral, so it reduces our LTFM aid. We're able to complete that project. Um, but without impacting the taxpayers. And then other financing sources, you'll see that, um, occasionally from year to year, the most commonplace, you'll see it is when we do a refunding bond, and that's just an accounting strategy um, of the way that's accounted for. Um, in the, um, numbers, you'll actually see there's an amount, and that is part of the LTFM, um, interest payment that we used for this, uh, middle school bond. For expenditures, again, it's really straightforward, the outstanding principal and interest, um, and then any service fees that are associated with maintaining that debt. Um, and then again, other financing uses is really just the opposite of the sources. It's usually the refunding bond or some capitalized interest and that sort of thing. So here is two years of audit results, what our current budget is showing, and then what we're proposing for next year. Um, so overall, it's relatively consistent, but you'll see there's a pretty substantial drop in our revenue for twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, you may recall uh, in December, when I presented the final certified levy, um, that we were projecting a decline in our debt service revenue because we paid off all of the old middle school debt. But then that was offset by an increase in our general fund, the voter-approved, um, capital projects levy. So that helped, um, make a, a more sustainable increase on our overall levy for taxpayers. But this is the result of that. We have less debt that we're paying, so there's less revenue. That hundred and five percent is obviously a percentage of that. So we're projecting about four point three million for next year in revenue. And then on the expenditure side, about two point four million in principal, and you can see that's a pretty substantial drop from the last three years, um, about one point five in interest, and then we average about seven thousand in, in fees for processing that. So about four million in expenditures. And then, um, this is just what the history looks like in terms of fund balance. Um, projecting to end of just over two million dollars at the end of next year. I anticipate, um, that the state will, um, increase their calc for debt service excess. So that five percent obviously builds a little bit over time if we're not using it in another way, and then they reduce our levy to basically, um, use the fund balance instead of additional taxpayer funds. I would say one point three to one point five is our typical range. Um, so I'm expecting that to, to decrease pretty substantially in the next two years or so. Um, this is our principal and interest schedule. Um, so you can see that we have five outstanding, um, bonds currently with what totals up the two point four million of principal. And this is those five, uh, basically through, um, the end of their maturities. So for the next eighteen years or so, um, forty-two point four million of overall principal and twelve point seven of interest. So that's what we have remaining. Um, again, this is pretty straightforward year over year. Um, the voter-approved debt and the hundred and five percent levy. So if you have any specific questions, I would gladly answer them.
Very good. Thank you, Val. Board members, any questions or comments? None at this time. Okay, you have a second presentation for us?
Sure do. It's your lucky night. We'll see if it keeps going here. Gotta skip out.
This is the proposed two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five internal service debt budget. We'll be asked to adopt it at the May twenty-eighth of board meeting.
Yep. Sweet. Thank you. All right. So now we're going to talk about the Internal Service Fund proposed budget. So the Internal Service Fund is, again, another standalone fund, um, that accounts solely for our self-insured health and dental plans. So similar to debt service, it's completely separate from the general fund. Uh, the revenue coming in is the premiums that the district and the employees are contributing, as well as some retirees. And the expenditures are the claims expense, um, for utilization of the plan, as well as administration expense for both um, Delta Dental and Blue Cross Blue Shield for administering and, um, mailing out health cards and processing claims and all of that. Dental has been, uh, self-insured since fiscal year oh six, so the oh six, oh five, oh six school year. And we added health as self-insured in fiscal year twelve. Um, we switched to Blue Cross Blue Shield effective one-one this year, and so that's, there's some new changes, um, coming with that, and so I'll talk through a little bit of that, um, when I get to the financials. Again, it's a standalone that is presented separately on our financial statements. Um, and our stop-loss insurance or reinsurance, as it's also commonly referred to, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand per member for our, um, health insurance. So I'll start with dental. Uh, they're presented on our financials as one fund, but we track them separately, um, in our finance system to make sure that we're appropriately charging everything. So you can see our enrollment or participation in the dental has declined slightly, which, again, is not really surprising considering that we've gone through some budget reductions. Um, but it's pretty minimal overall. Um, this was the first year that we actually increased the dental premiums since we went self-insured in fiscal year oh six. So there have been zero increases to dental, uh, for eighteen years. That is quite the record. Um, but we are getting up to a point where the inflation on expenditures is now putting us where we're spending down the fund balance, and so we're incrementally increasing that to make sure we stay on top of that. Um, so from a financial summary perspective, this is also a very stable fund. Um, we have a, we're projecting about six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, um, for revenue and premiums, a little bit of interest, um, insurance claims of about seven hundred thousand, and then forty thousand or so for administrative fees. And you can see in the history that that's been very consistent. And so we're projecting to end, um, next year with about two hundred and forty-five thousand, which is slightly less than our goal, which is uh, the industry standard of forty percent of expenditure claims. And again, we're doing the incremental increases to make sure that we're staying on top of it so that we can keep up rather than having to do some significant increases, um, in single years. But overall, very stable. For health insurance, again, participation is down a little more substantially than the dental was. But again, we've had some pretty significant premium increases in here, as well as, um, some budget reduction. So this year, uh, the Benefits Advisory Committee recommended a seven percent increase. Um, so you can see those rates on the bottom. And when we pull everything together with all of the participation and the history, we're looking at about ten point two million, two million dollars in charges of services premium revenue. Um, we do actually get the, um, prescription rebates, which we changed probably four years ago now. And so those are coming to us directly rather than to the carrier. And so we're estimating that at about three hundred and fifty thousand. Again, the history looks like we might be getting more than that, but because we switched carriers, um, they don't always have the same contracts and, um, prescription rebate language. And so choosing to be a little more conservative on that, um, for this budget. And then interest earnings, again, is really dependent on our cash flow and where we have, um, things invested. Insurance claims, about nine point four million, um, a slight increase. Again, that is increasing from medical inflation but decreasing due to participation. Um, in the narrative that I provided, I gave you some more specific breakout of some of the really high-cost claimants that we've seen. Um, I would say trending at this point, year over year. Um, we have quite a few people hitting stop-loss. Uh, so that hundred and twenty-five thousand, so our, our, in the insurance claims, we pay up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then Blue Cross Blue Shield or previously Medica would pay the difference. Um, but then we're paying an insurance premium. And so part of that administrative fee is really our insurance, um, covering that. And so last year, I think it was about one point three million. Um, and as you can see on our admin fees, we're not even paying that much, and so they have year over year taken a loss on that. Um, that particular plan, and so we're hoping that things will level out, but it's, we've had some, um, tough situations that are, are coming through on this plan. So we continue to monitor it. Um, I, I will say that we're in a much better place. Uh, the district was able to step forward and put in about a million and a half annually ongoing to help support this fund and to take the burden off of our employees during a really difficult time. Um, and so, again, balancing those strategic commitments, um, stewardship in people is sometimes uh, difficult to do, but again, I think that was the right choice, and this fund is much more stable than I had been presenting in the past. So again, we're slightly under that fund balance goal, but, um, much closer than, uh, we had been and had been projecting. So we are expecting, again, some high claims to continue, but hopeful that it'll maybe, uh, tighten up a little bit. And that's all I have. So if you have any specific questions on self-insurance, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you so much, Val. Board members, any comments or questions? Hey, Ben.
Thanks, Val, as always. There's a question in terms of, yeah, they get the summary, you know, it's that the health market is difficult to predict, right? Insurance is a hedge against uncertainty, right? But what do we look at when we try to figure out kind of where we're headed in terms of, you know, premium increases or just like total cost of the plan? What are some of the things that you look at? And, you know, kind of the out-years to try to inform where we might be?
Yep. So we, uh, we look at a three-year, um, average, um, medical inflation projection, where our actual claims have been, and, um, we work with One Digital's, our health consultant, so they help pull all of that data. We also look, um, we have some detailed analytics that give us some insight into, um, certain claimants, high claimants, and what the trajectory of their illness could be, um, right now and in the future. So that helps us identify if there's maybe some new things that are coming up that will be more expensive, um, or if there's maybe some things that we've been paying for that are falling off. Um, or if it was a one-time, very expensive surgery, and we don't need to plan for that, those sorts of things. So we look at that as well. Um, we also just look at what the, what our, um, what our admin fee is going to be. So we're really projecting our max, um, expenditure costs or claim, and then our admin, and making sure that the revenue based on what we're projecting for continued enrollment, um, is basically not going backwards. Um, so those are the big things we look for is kind of that trend data. Is there something happening in the market that we think is going to impact us? Um, and One Digital does a really great job of helping counsel us, and they come to our Benefits Advisory Committee and share that information out, um, so we can collectively make a decision.
So I would assume then that if we see a discrepancy between where we think we might be in terms of expenditures and where we're headed in terms of revenue, that that informs what those increases in the out-years might look like?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah. We meet annually, um, to, to set the rates. But we're constantly having that conversation with the Benefits Advisory, uh, when we meet with them about if we do this this year, that means we either do more or less next year and kind of that compounding conversation as well.
Thank you. Anyone else comment or question at this point? No.
Thank you for your positive and outstanding report, as always. You demonstrated the district, uh, well-management.
Thank you, though.
You know, anyone else comment or question? Very good. Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on item C, Northfield High School Referendum Plan Discussion. The board will review its March fifth work session and discuss what referendum options will be placed on the November two thousand and twenty-four ballot, the ballot question structure, and the proposed bond term. And board members, as we begin at this next section or this next discussion, I want to publicly acknowledge the work each of you put into this discussion and ultimately into tonight's decision. Thank you for giving additional hours of your personal and family time to consider how to address this high school dilemma. You read materials, attended workshops or work sessions, or heard community feedback in person by email, family, coworkers, um, grocery store, surveys, tours, uh, student surveys, public forum, social media, and, um, I know that you have considered all of that feedback, um, and taken it seriously. You've processed expert and stakeholder information. You've met with Dr. Hillman, and you've, um, asked our consulting partners insightful and hard questions. Um, you've done the work. You've collected the information. You have what you need to authorize the district a plan, um, the district to plan a bond referendum project, the question structure, and the bond length. We will vote later tonight regarding those three items. I heard you say at the Tuesday work session that you want to send a referendum to the voters this November to address the high school facility problems. I also heard three of you say that you are considering a version of option two, which we call the reimagine plan. Um, and I count myself as the fourth person considering that plan, the reimagine plan. Tonight, I want, I want to help build consensus among all of us around this reimagine option. We didn't complete our discussion at the work session around question structure, how many questions on the ballot, or the bond length. We heard from one of our consultants that considering a longer bond length gives us, gives them wiggle room, um, to adjust um, to our financial benefit, the final bond length, and so that could be something we could consider. Um, so tonight, I am tasking each of you to give your comments openly on where you are right now with the reimagine plan. Share openly how many questions you can live with and share openly what you would like the bond length to be. We need to know during this discussion period what your sticking points are so we can maximize our time together. Dr. Hillman gave us a worksheet to help facilitate the creation of a motion. As we discuss now, you can be connecting those menu options to formulate a proper motion. Finally, the, the community elected each of us multiple times in the case of Noel, Jeff, and Amy. They trust all of us to do this work, to work with the administration, to work with each other, to consider the needs of all students and consider the impact on our stakeholders. Most of all, they trust each of us to reach consensus tonight on what we will send to the voters. While everyone loves a unanimous vote, Dr. Hillman, um, has explained in the past that we, and we experienced it ourselves the last time we voted on the high school dilemma, that we are a true representation of our community. We have a diverse understanding of the ability, um, to finance and the level of interest in the scope of the high school project. I want to invite each of you to work even harder tonight, um, to reach a consensus, all the while understanding that even our community has a minority voice against certain aspects of how to approach this high school dilemma. I'm asking for both things. I want us to arrive at consensus and know that we not, we cannot completely align with every community member's opinions. So I'd like to hear from each of you, and now is the time to share openly. Who would like to share first? Hey, Amy?
So, um, this has been a long process that we've gone through. For me, it actually started seven years ago, eight years ago, when I first joined the board. Um, but certainly the last two years have been very active. Um, you, you know, I, I think if people ask me what I want, I would say I want a brand-new high school on the same property. But I know I can't get what I want. I don't see the support financially in our town, unfortunately. It's because the high school would be a hundred and sixty million dollars. I, I don't think that would fly. But I do think that during this process, we talked to a lot of people. We had a task force. We involved teachers, students, and we came up with a list of our needs. And it's a long list of needs, but it was well-thought and a lot of work went into that. And so my preferred approach would be My preferred approach would be to let the community know what our needs are and ask them to cover. Our needs in the reimagined version. We have a community that sports education. They've come through for us before. I think they would understand the importance of. Trying to use this as a, maybe a once in a thirty year opportunity, or I even heard people say once in fifty year opportunity to really. Make a big difference in our high school. This will affect generations. So my preferred approach would be to have two questions on the ballot. One would be the reimagine option, including the additional athletic facilities. I think it's important to ask for both of them because there are both savings that we get with it by building them both at the same time, things like locker rooms. You know, if we, if we ended up having to wait for a new athletic facilities, that would complicate the planning process. I think there's a lot of benefits to. Doing it all at once. And I think we've seen, well, I don't like to say that academics is. More important than the, the athletic side of it. I think they're both important in very different ways. And if we break that into two separate questions, we have to choose one that's more important, either the athletics or the academics. And I would like to say, no, this is what we need. This is what the community have said we need. This is what the community has said it would use and to keep that together. So I see two questions. One is the combined academic. I don't like the word tower because I imagine something ten, twelve, fifteen stories high, but academic building. And then the new recreational facilities, athletic facilities in the first part of the question. And then the second question. I would add the geothermal option because I think we have a lot of people in their community who are really. Into energy savings, climate change. I think there would be a lot of support for that as well. So that's what I'm thinking right now.
Amy, do you have an opinion on the bond length?
Well, I think with the larger amount, we'd have to go with either a twenty five or thirty year bond. And that would be dependent on interest rates and I, I don't, I don't think we can decide exactly, but I would go for the longer. Bonds at this time.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else would like to, or I should say, who would like to go next? I'd like to hear from all of you. Hey, Cory.
So Claudia, as you shared, I'm on the record with my preferences being three questions as we discussed last Tuesday. For the reimagine plan. So I'll share a statement here to recap my thoughts for the board and then also catch up those who are joining the conversation for the first time tonight. I have a daughter who attends the middle school and she often wears a maroon and gold T-shirt that says NMS Pride. Now pride can cover a lot of areas, both individually and collectively. It covers the tangible and the intangible. And yes. Pride covers learning spaces and the culture cultivated therein. In the context of the middle school, pride centers around preparedness, respect, integrity, dependability and excellence. I've been thinking about what happens to the pride when rising ninth graders enter the high school for the first time for the last leg of their K-12 education. And in that reflecting, what I've heard in the past three years while serving on the school board. For most, including students, educators, parents, alumni and the community at large, that pride has long been lost in our current high school facility. So I wonder when and where was that pride lost? Perhaps students lose that pride the moment they try to navigate the labyrinth of the high school on a hectic first day of school. And yet months later still haven't timed their journey between classes well enough to be able to stop at their locker and use one of the few too many restrooms. No level of preparedness by students and staff encounter a poor California design with cramped hallways, unfavorable sight lines. And way too many points of access to the building. Perhaps it was when students first saw a classmate who uses a wheelchair leave the building in order to access the weight room. Or use alternate means to get to the music department. How can we claim respect for people as stated as one of our strategic commitments? When some students can't access several parts of the building without additional barriers. Perhaps the students lost that pride when they went to an oppressive, undersized classroom with makeshift filters covering the fluorescent overhead lighting. Placed there to combat the harshness of the illumination because studies have shown. How improper lighting negatively affects academic success and mental health. Perhaps it was when the students like me saw our building couldn't adequately host most athletic tournaments. Horsing staff to place wrestling mats in the cafeteria for additional matches. Perhaps the pride was lost when in the morning, students had to pick out two outfits for the day to match the widely variable temperatures in classrooms. Let us as a board have integrity and recognize that this is not okay. Perhaps it evaporated on the first day of school this year when record heat plagued the HVAC system, which is in disrepair and passed its life expectancy. And ran at half capacity because of broken parts. This issue is underscored by the fact that fifty percent of our district's maintenance team's time is spent at this one building. As a reminder, the district has seven buildings. This lack of dependability in our infrastructure certainly does not meet our district's strategic commitment to stewardship, which we are all charged with upholding. Perhaps the pride was lost when as students, they learned about our values and you values regarding the quality of so many of our, or excuse me. Quality of insulation for our single pane windows and walls. Because so many of our exterior walls are woefully inadequate for our climate. And the alleged simple fix is anything but simple and certainly costly, which some people would characterize as throwing good money after bad. The excellence on display here comes from our students civic engagement and care not for themselves because they know they won't benefit from any action tonight. These students care about what their younger peers and kids yet to be born will call their high school experience. It would be wise of us to follow their example. These are the stories we've heard directly from students and educators and community feedback sessions. And evaluations from community members following the high school tours, from the scientifically sound community survey, from emails and phone calls. And finally, from the student survey conducted by the district youth council. These students are leaders. We should listen to them and think about the kids yet to come and the staff we want to grow and retain here for the coming decades of the high school. The likely reimagine plan before each night accomplishes this and ultimately gives the voters the final say. The seven of us, along with a talented administration and leadership team are the caretakers for this district for this moment in time. I can't concern myself with what was in terms of prior decisions made regarding the high school. It doesn't interest me. I can only address what is and what is in front of us is an easy choice to reimagine this essential building. To address modern and future learning and create a space with safety, security, accessibility and learning flexibility at the forefront. My fellow board members, most of our decisions made in this room have an immediate impact. Tonight's decision can have a lasting impact for generations to come. Let's make the right decision. Vote in the affirmative for the expected motion that will come before you shortly to reimagine the high school. And let our community have its say. It's well past time. After all, don't we want to have pride in our high school?
Thank you, Cory. And will you state again what your, so you're, you would like to have the reimagine option, which is on the table? And then you want three questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like three questions.
The bond length?
Thirty years, question one being ninety five point, or excuse me, yeah, ninety five point eight million dollars. Which would be the reimagine option at one seventeen minus the field house and the turf. Question two would be the field house at eighteen point eight million dollars. Question three would be geothermal. And I'm a firm supporter of three questions because I think it hits the financial tax capacity that we think we can get. And then also gives folks the option to give more if they do want to.
Thank you for making that clear tonight. Good. Okay. Board members, who would like to go next? I'd like to hear from all of you. So I'll give you a minute. You'd like to go a bit?
Tried to synthesize my thoughts as Cory did into writing here. So I'll read, read a little bit and hopefully you'll catch what I'm after here in the comments. So during our organizational meeting in January, we had the good fortune to be sworn in by Associate Justice of the Minnesota Supreme Court, Gordon Moore. Justice Moore reminded us that we are charged with the roles of vision, accountability and advocacy on behalf of the district. He then led us through our oath, which I'll read here. So I swear that I will support the constitution of the United States of America and Minnesota, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board. Member of independent school district six fifty nine, to the best of my judgment and ability. In reflecting on this oath, I wanted to better understand what Minnesota state constitution says about education. So I went and looked it up. Article eight, section one says, and this was written back in the eighteen fifties, so we'll catch the language there. The stability of a republican form of government depending mainly on the intelligence of the people. It is the duty of the legislature to establish a general and uniform system of public schools. The legislature shall make such provisions by taxation or otherwise, as will secure a thorough and efficient system of public schools throughout the state. A history lesson. We also discussed our, at the organizational meeting, policy two oh three, which is the operation of the school board of education, the bylaws. Which, among other things, gives the board the responsibility to establish a learning environment. For education by providing necessary buildings and equipment, materials and staffing to support the instructional process. And to provide for comfort, health and the safety of students, staff and visitors when they are in attendance at school or engaged in school sponsored activities. So as we've discussed the issue of the high school bond referendum. I've been reflecting on our oath, the Minnesota constitution and our bylaws as we reimagine a learning environment for our high school. Twenty-five years into the twenty-first century. We've discussed, analyzed, reflected on the challenges we face in trying to maintain an aging building. A building that served the community well for the last sixty years, but a facility that needs to be reimagined for the realities and requirements of teaching future generations of students in Northfield. We've heard from that community that a significant majority, anywhere between sixty-five and probably seventy-four percent, looking at the plus or minus in the survey results. Understands these issues and supports improving our high school building. Additionally, the phone survey shows how this translates into dollar amounts that the current tax environment can support in our district. Based on that survey, we can confidently put forward a request of between ninety-five and a hundred billion dollars. So with this information and our extensive discussions and work groups, tonight I will support option two, the reimagine option. With three questions presented on the ballot. The first question will ask voters to approve a new academic section of the building that adds over a hundred thousand square feet of modern classrooms, more secure learning environments and strategically renovating core existing infrastructure. The second question will ask the community to support a four court field house that can serve to alleviate current practice schedules as well as stand as a community resource that could be used for a variety of important functions. The third question will ask the community to consider funding a geothermal system to heat and cool these spaces, reducing operating costs and the energy footprint of the reimagine space. I believe a bond term of up to thirty years helps to reduce the tax impact while providing the needed funding to support this approach. And tonight there is a sense of urgency as we've talked about due to increasing construction costs, supply chain and labor costs of projected cost of a new high school soared from eighty million in two thousand seventeen to over a hundred and sixty million in twenty twenty-four. If we wait or if our ballot measure faces an uncertain future in November, we may lose our opportunity to reimagine the high school for future generations altogether. Continued rising construction costs may put a future reimagine option out of reach and Northfield will have few options to substantially change the existing high school. The shape and the mechanics of the vote we take tonight will not be long remembered. But the community will remember is that this board had a vision for the future and rose to its obligations for current and future generations of students. Therefore, I invite us to share in a vision of a reimagine high school, to be accountable to future generations and to advocate for all students as we make this vitally important decision tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Ben, for sharing. And I did capture where you said with the question structure and the bond length for your comments. Anybody else? I should say, who's next? Hey, Jenny.
Thank you, Claudia. As I had mentioned in a previous work session and probably quite a few times maybe. I think that new construction is the most cost effective method for, when it comes to, to schools. Over remodeling. But then, you know, our, our survey came out and I just kind of scrambled and, and went back to the, the drawing board and. I really took a deep dive into. All of our options line by line and studied, and studied everything thoroughly. And I, I don't feel that with option two, our financial stewardship is exercise as I would expect when considering over a hundred million dollars cost to taxpayers. And there are quite a few reasons that I have, but one area of concern is the sections of the remaining area of the building. That is receiving about forty-one million just in remodeling, yet vast spaces are unaccounted for, such as. The two cafeteria areas that total almost nine thousand square feet. I just see so many issues there, especially, well, first off, just having the unaccounted spaces. That's kind of scary when we're, we're putting this plan out to the taxpayers and expecting them to approve a hundred million dollars or more. And then also. The design that we will be preparing food in the high school in one area and then transferring it over to the new building where we have the new cafeteria. Is, is disturbing to me. And then. It, it, so it will total three cafeteria areas, areas which will total over eighteen thousand square feet alone. And I know that we can say, sure, we'll just worry about those design details later. You know, we're, we're not the designers. That's not our job, but our job is to direct the district. And I think that this model in the new high school building or, or academic building. That we should take that seriously in, in having a plan and making sure that there's no unaccounted spaces. Or, or wasted spaces and things like that. And the option two that would be approved tonight is setting us up for failure to serve all students because while it. Will definitely serve a percentage. Very well. Too many others will not have the opportunities due to the underplanning of all areas. For example. We need flexible classrooms and this is what the state. Of Minnesota recommends us to do. And I'll, I'll just read a section from the Minnesota Department of Education guide for planning. School construction projects in Minnesota. A couple of quotes that really stuck out to me. Where one, school districts need to stress the need to plan for continuing expansion. Which again, that's, that's, wouldn't seem like our responsibility because we're not architects or designers. But as board members and administration, I think that we need to take that into consideration. And also a second quote is flexible, convertible, expandable and multipurpose spaces should be an integral part. School facilities planning must be undertaken with present and future space considerations utmost in mind. So that's a very serious recommendation from the state of Minnesota. And in looking at our, our model, we have four flexible spaces total. And I don't really consider them flexible because they'll be dedicated to the world languages. And so that's also another area that is really difficult for me to find support when we're going against. The Department of Education's recommendations there, especially since they're such strong recommendations for us. High school students should be excited to go to school each day. And I think that in allowing those flexible classroom spaces. I think that, that, and I had mentioned this at a previous work session, that it allows us to be. To expand our, some of those career and technical education areas. That I think would help a lot with that, with getting our high school students excited when we're offering. Some more of those classes because right now there's just not very many, although we require them to choose seven electives just in order to graduate. I mean, of course, they can take more. And I hope they do, but we put those requirements on them and, and we're not giving them, you know, as many options as we can. And especially seeing this model come out. I'm just really disappointed that there isn't more space there. And I know it's been said that the. V Wing offers career and technical education. That's five classrooms total. That, that limits us for the next thirty, fifty years, however long this new building is supposed to last. To me, that's unacceptable. And as Claudia actually mentioned at the last work session, you know, we could probably just use, you know, a lot of those career tracks and career and technical education courses. We can just use some of the flexible classrooms or regular classrooms and transform. And that would be correct. That was a really good point. However, like I said, there are no flexible classrooms in the new model and there's only five. Career and technical ed in the remaining portion of the building after all the demolition. So that's no longer an answer. And then another really serious issue that I had was for special, special education. So how it sits now in the new academic building, the, according to the Minnesota Department of Education, there too, in the guide, they recommend that special education students should have a minimum of fifty-six square feet per student of, when you're considering new construction. In our model, it's forty-seven square foot as per special ed student. I think that's underserving, and I'm very disappointed in that. I think we can do better. And again, we can just say, well, that's something that in the design stages, maybe we'll, we'll be able to, to figure that out, but the space summary for option two for reimagine has been started back in twenty twenty-two, so it's been two years that they could have worked out some of these issues and flaws, and it has not been. And so I see this remaining, and I really don't think that there will be a drastic overhaul here. And then further, the M-Wing, right now is where we house most of our special ed students, that will be tore down according to this plan. And so that's removing, and it's severely limiting our special education students than to just that forty-seven square foot. I mean, forever then. And, and to me, that's just completely unacceptable. I did hear also the excuse of, you know, that, that I've had since October, you know, to go through all of this and bring up these concerns. However, the, the model, the space summary model was not given to us the first three board work sessions for the high school improvement project. So we just had it basically for that last work session, which was last week. And I, I tried to crank out as many of these issues that I noticed last week, but, you know, with already, we were, had already moved forward so much in the process, which is a good thing, but not having this huge chunk of information until the very end, I think, also disappointed me, and it, it makes me lose trust that we were not given this very specific, incredibly important information that the Department of Education suggests until the very end. And another, another point is that we've heard many times the question, what was the district thinking in creating and approving the high school layout that was meant for a warm state, that was not meant for our climate? So it made me really think, well, maybe I should pause and, you know, reconsider this because I don't want that to happen, you know, years down the road for someone to say, why didn't the board stop for a second and just try to figure out if this model that's being presented to us is going to serve all students? And as I said, I, I just don't think that it is, and I don't want to make the similar mistake, especially with a hundred million dollars of taxpayer money in cost. I think that it was irresponsible planning, and that leads to underserving, and I, I can't support that, so I will not be supporting the option two tonight.
Hey Jenny, thank you for sharing that. What, so are you, are you sitting on just no? Like sending nothing to the voters?
Well, no, I, I won't be supporting option two at all.
You won't be supporting option two?
Right.
So are you, are you suggesting something else, or what could it be about option two to build consensus tonight for you? What would it take? And I feel like you had some very good points that could have questions. I'd be interested in hearing those. Let me just check, so Sal can answer some of those questions if you're interested in hearing those answers, if that would help move.
Well, I mean, I, I brought, I brought a lot of it up to last week's, at last week's session, and I, I didn't receive any information back. It was almost a week, and nothing has really changed. I mean, I would be up for extending the time to discuss that, especially since we only received the model last week, or her last week's work session and not any of the previous work sessions. But I know we kind of have a timeline, so I'm not sure if that could happen or not, if we could extend our discussions.
Okay, so I'm hearing you say that you would be interested in extending the discussion. I'd like to hear if you feel that extending it would get you closer to being in consensus with several of us who are interested in option two.
I'm, I'm not sure, because that's, that's what the discussion, the discussion would be, you know, questions and answers, so I'm not, I wouldn't have the answer right yet. It would come after.
Do you feel that you could get to option two, or do you feel that it's off the table for you? I just want to get a feel for how much information you need.
If we could have, you know, there would be serious overhauls to the plan, then it would probably no longer be option two. It would be something else.
Would you like to have some of those questions tonight, or do you, you want to?
I really don't have any, any questions, just the, the comments that I presented.
Right, so I'm sorry, I, I phrase that as a question, I apologize. You made some comments about floor space, the cafeteria, no classrooms available, I'm sorry, I'm paraphrasing, no classrooms available to be used to, for different subjects, the different flexible spaces. Would you be interested in hearing a response to those comments, or? Want to let it sit?
Sure, I mean, yeah.
Okay, Sal from Old, would you come up? Hi, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thanks for having me.
Sal, do you need a recap of some of those items? Were you keeping some?
I think I was tracking them okay, but I'd be happy to go in any order that you would like to go in. Would you, is there anywhere you'd want to start?
Let me go back here. Okay, I guess you could explain how that food service would work, Ben?
Sure.
Sure, yeah, that's a great one. So if you go to the budget sheet, for me, it's a spreadsheet, so I'm going to call it line eight and line nine. You can see that there's various renovations of the building called out, and so you mentioned the medium renovation of the V-Wing. Right below that, it's a light renovation of media center and other remaining space, and so the kitchen cafeteria area actually falls underneath that square footage. And then further down, for me, it's line thirteen, under area, it says kitchen. There's also an allocation for additional kitchen equipment, and so the idea would be that the kitchen and the servery could remain and be created out of the existing space and then connect on to a new commons, not disconnected. So I, I can appreciate how the lack of having a design, one could wonder, are we preparing it over here and having to ship it across the building over here, but we had talked about that those things could still be contiguous. So I think that you could have a, a food service experience that would be not kitchen detached from a cafeteria commons.
Okay, because the, the MDE also has very specific suggestions about, you know, keeping, you know, the dining area very close to your, your food service area, so that's why I had.
Correct, they'd be contiguous, I'm sure, yeah.
Right, and so then, would students then come into the old cafeteria to, for food service?
What had been discussed thus far, and certainly, you already kind of referenced this, that some of this is designed, but what had been discussed thus far is to allow the kitchen cap, the kitchen and servery to expand. It would actually expand into what you think of as cafeteria today, and then have additional seating in the, in the classroom wing. I'll keep you saying not use tower. So your kitchen and servery are severely undersized for the number of students you're trying to serve. But that being said, you have a lot of great equipment that could be kind of picked up and moved. And so the idea is they would expand out, so that'd be the south wall could expand further south to right-size your kitchen, but then also be immediately adjacent to a dining area.
And then, what, how would you account for the, the square footage of the remaining cafeteria, or I should say, the existing cafeteria areas?
What do you mean account for?
Would, would there be classrooms there?
So there was a renovation proposed in the budget to address some of the deferred maintenance needs for those spaces. Like I said, the kitchen will take over, I think, the better part of what you think of as the upper cafeteria today, that and circulation space. The lower cafeteria space could be additional classrooms if you wanted it to be. It could also continue to serve in its function that it has today as an auditorium lobby, for lack of a better description, so I could see a couple of different futures there.
Wouldn't that cost more than to renovate for classrooms?
To remain as it is?
Renovate into classrooms?
More than what? As compared to what?
Because right now, there is no renovation to transform that area into classrooms.
So, and that, maybe some of this gets to your bigger picture question about the size of the addition. So we've instructed the plan around the idea of fourteen hundred students, so my response would be that no more classrooms are needed to support fourteen hundred students.
See, that's, that's the concern that I have.
So that's a bigger concern, right?
Yes, that's, that all, all these little issues go into the large concern that I have that we're underserving, especially according to the Minnesota Department of Education.
And I'd love to get into your special education topic. So did you arrive at your square foot per student for special education students by taking the, is it ten thousand? Ten thousand three hundred and thirty-five square feet and dividing it by the number of sped students that you have?
The Department of Education states they're just looking at classroom only when they give their square footage number per student, so I subtracted out, you know, the closets or the storage, the toilet and staff space, and anything that wasn't classroom-related. And so that's what they're, that's what they're basing off of is classroom.
Sure. And then did you base it off of the number of students receiving special education services today? I think that's a good, a good note to make.
Well, I mean, it just contributes to the, you know, severe disappointment that I have in that area.
Did you have any other questions that we didn't get to yet?
Well, she had comments. I have questions to question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I keep calling them questions. Yes, comments.
And I know this goes into that overall issue of, of classrooms again, but while you're asking, just to have those, those flexible classrooms in the, in the new academic building, especially going through with the Department of Education, their guidelines are, and it just doesn't, it just seems like there's a, a lack of that.
So there's really two ways to think about flexibility. There's certainly flexibility to how is additional students into the future, but then there's a whole subset of the idea of flexibility around how you design those classrooms to suit your own needs into the future. So flexibility isn't always thought of as only just having more than you think you need. It's also the fact, the features of being able to combine two of them, or three classrooms in a row, or expand on to a flexible learning area like Greenville Park, and so I don't see the plan that the board is pondering as being inconsistent with what the Department of Education thinks about in regards to flexibility. That being said, if the board were to, so choose a plan that served more students, I would imagine that the cost would go up correspondingly, right, because we'd need a certain number of more teaching stations, so that would be my recommendation to the board, is if you wanted to consider a building of fifteen hundred students or sixteen hundred students, that we'd want to work with the high school administration to review the classroom counts and see where that gets absorbed. There may be certain places, for example, physical education, that maybe there's no more space needed because a fieldhouse still accommodates it. Or maybe you only need seven point four of one classroom today, and adding another hundred and fifty or two hundred students doesn't actually increase that, whereas there might be other areas you would have to. So anytime you change the capacity of the building, you'd want to reimagine kind of all of these different line items. That being said, I do think the task force that met in fall of twenty-two reviewed enrollment history and did not see any evidence for upward increase in enrollment, so that's where we really landed at the fourteen hundred.
I'm not talking about the, any increase in enrollment. I was just talking about those more flexible classrooms instead of the, the more dedicated space. And then I know enrollment is, is projected to go down for
Right.
how many more years, probably. However, special education students enrollment is going up, has been going up, and we can probably assume that it will continue going up, and so that just exasperates my issue there.
Sure. Are there any other comments you wanted, any, or you or other board members would want any input on, from me?
Well, I wanted to hear about the, okay, so when I think about the flexible spaces.
Correct.
And let's go back to the, the comment about the special education square footage requirement. Help me with the language here. So the Minnesota Department of Education is requiring a certain square footage, no?
No, there's no word requirement, so the Planning for School Construction Guide has recommendations in it. So there's no really requirements, and really what would happen next if you all were to make a decision is we would submit something that's called a review and comment to the Department of Ed, and the space summary would be a part of that submission. It'd be probably a hundred, hundred and twenty-page document, what have you. And then they would review it for educational advisability, and you'd get a letter back from the commissioner that would either say that they either recommend it or don't recommend it. Not recommending it would not be that you can't hold an election, but that you would have to get a supermajority vote, so you know, anything that you're pondering would go to the Department of Ed next, but is not a requirement. It's a recommendation.
And so having classrooms, as you were describing, in one scenario where one classroom can turn into two or three classrooms, in my thinking, that would address the, the space needed for additional special education students. Does that track?
I would say the district can choose to allocate however many of these square feet that you're budgeting to serve special education purposes, and maybe to complicate it even more. The idea of a push-in model versus a pull-out model for special education really complicates this topic. So the idea that there's rooms that have signs on the wall that say special education is not even necessarily the model that many districts are moving toward, and serving students in the least restricted environment, which sometimes includes serving them in an environment with the rest of their peers and not in a specially identified space, really complicates a statement like that from the MDE. And so we could go through the space summary and say, well, maybe they're being served in some of this space, or in a flexible learning space outside of their space, or, right, and so you, of course, would all want to be comfortable with the amount of space that you're saying you're setting aside for special education, but the evolution of special education delivery practices really complicates saying it's exactly this many square feet. And I'm, and of course, not an educator, right? I just, as I go with design buildings, those are the kinds of conversations we're having.
So I am gonna call on other board members.
Yeah, and I can sit down.
But I wanted to ask Jenny, does, what Sal just shared, does that answer some of your concern, or do you feel like you're still sitting in the same?
I mean, it just, it just kind of adds to my concern.
So you don't feel like it changes anything for you in terms of being able to allocate different spaces, bigger spaces?
Well, she said maybe, so it's, it's, I mean, there's a chance that that couldn't happen at all.
And what about the cafeteria space? Did, did you feel like that concern got answered?
I mean, there's still areas, like I, I had said, you know, that if we, if we wanted to really make the best use and be the most cost-effective with our taxpayer money, we could, we should have plans for potentially remodeling those areas and, and adding classrooms or lab spaces or, you know, something, but then as Sal mentioned, you know, that the cost would be increased when you're adding and.
Okay, thank you so much for sharing. Okay, Ben.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you want me to go sit? Oh, for me?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Would you say you provided us a final definitive design space study?
So what I would say we've done is we have looked at the existing building and the spaces you have and worked to quantify those at the high school administration. And then we've also done some pressure testing against MDE guidelines for square foot per student. Anytime you're doing an addition renovation project, it's a little bit complicated, right? Would I say it is final? No, I don't expect that exactly what we've published here is exactly what you choose to build. What I will say is that the end bottom line number, so that one hundred and nineteen six forty-four translates, as you all can see, very directly to the budget. So what I would say is that you've, you're asking the voters for that amount of clay to accomplish this amount of tasks and needs, and it would be rare to go through a design process and have it come back to this in a T, right? Just to pick on any one thing. Is the head-end room going to be a hundred and eighty square feet? Maybe it's a hundred and ninety-one, right? So no, I would say by no means is this a final document, but it's a proxy for the goals you're trying to accomplish and the budget that you're setting.
So you haven't provided us with the exact measures?
Correct, nope. All of that comes after a successful referendum.
And could you describe what that design process typically looks like after a referendum?
Yep, would be happy to. So if you went out for a referendum in November, what I would typically see is a lot of excitement and getting a group together, what we like to call a core planning group, which is a series of stakeholders. So that would be staff. Sometimes parents and students can be very fun to involve at this level of building. And they would start their work, I would hope, before winter break, so maybe a meeting or two in December. In total, we would recommend somewhere around twelve months for design. And a lot of that is, as you all ponder, these very important topics about how you're going to build this and design this, right? So that's why I say that some of this is really a proxy for what you might do in the end. That also allows us to get through city planning processes, state planning processes, what have you. So imagine there's twelve months of that. We get a lot of input for the first few months. Then we go into a, what we call design development, which is where a lot of engineering happens, and we kind of finalize some details. And then we go into what's called construction documents, which will take about five months for a project like this. So then imagine it's December of twenty twenty-five-ish. We're going out for bid, probably for a project of this magnitude, you'd want drawings on the street for probably five or six weeks. Newton's not here, so I can't speak for them, but I, I would imagine they would want something like that. So you can imagine a bid opening in potentially February of twenty twenty-six. Then we would be in the permitting phase for a few months, and I could imagine shovels starting in like May of twenty twenty-six, something like that, so there's a lot of work to come after a successful referendum. Really, what we do pre-referendum is just try to make sure that the budget is advisable for all these things you may choose to do. just try to make sure that the budget is advisable for all these things you may choose to do. And then during the design process, there'd be a lot of, maybe you can afford that, but we can't do this thing over here. Maybe you can afford it. And so we always go back to, what did we ask the voters for? And what is most important?
Question. So, part of that stakeholder engagement process is where you can assort some of those questions out about final design and what that looks like?
Correct. I mean, we would, I would say it would be inadvisable to go into that process if there was significant doubt in the amount of space being allocated. To me, a room here or there is something that we could work out. But I'm not a member of the board. So obviously, you know, all of you would have to develop comfort with that. But it's not unusual to have a space summary that changes when you come to the built product.
Did you have another?
Another question. Dr. Hillman. So when we talk about enrollment projections, you know, and if there's concern around where we're headed from enrollment, what do those look like today, as far out as we can look?
I'll have Val help me with this as well, as she does our enrollment projections. But what we're seeing right now is this is the one year, if you recall, we had Hazel Reinhardt complete a demographic study for us. She's done a few of them for us over time. The previous 10-year one, she was incredibly close over those 10 years to how many students would be at the end of the report. She completed this project for us, I believe, two years ago. And this is the year where she projected we would be flat or slightly increased. And that's exactly what we're doing this year. You're gonna see it in enrollment report later. That's exactly what's happening. And then she's projecting that we will continue to see a decline in students over the next six to seven years. We've talked before about the really two driving factors, lower birth rate in Rice County and the lack of housing, not just any kind of housing that we have. So right now, that declining enrollment is projected through the remainder of her report. Now, there can be things that can change that. There's a variety of different things that could impact. In the previous demographic study, she, we were very close to her projected number, even with an influx in open enrollment in the 2017 year. So you, I always get, struggle when we start to predict beyond five years of children who we know have been born. But Hazel is an exemplary consultant in this area and her data, there's reason schools really go after her because her data is, is very solid. So this is the year that we're seeing being flat, slightly increased, which is great. We're happy for that. And unfortunately, the, the decline is coming in the next few years. And Val, do you have any other thing to add? Val does our enrollment projections.
So Hazel's original projection was about 400 students over 10 years. And when I look at our history from her last study, I would say we're down about 250, 200 to 250, depending on which year you pick. And if I look out until 27, 28, it looks like another 250 roughly. So pretty, pretty close to that projection. And about 150 of those are 712. I don't have a breakout 912. And 100 are elementary age. So I would say another 250 is roughly what we're projecting. And 150 of that at the secondary, including middle school. So is that helpful?
Yes. And I think, what's our current enrollment at the high school? Give or take?
Well, no, I have.
1248. Okay. So then we reasonably say we're down 100 from there, give or take.
Approximately.
Okay. So about 11, maybe about 1,200. Okay.
I was gonna make that comment. So that could have the effect of rooms that have a name today being a flex space in the future, right? As you're a district that's not needing more and more space.
Right. I guess from my perspective, it's hard to, I think we can all kind of hold in our minds, I, what a space might look like, but that's not really what we're here to discuss tonight. We're here to discuss, you know, creating a budget in which the building that's gonna be around for 30 to 50 years, and undoubtedly, the demographics of the district are gonna shift and change in ways and in 20 years out that we don't know, you know, but we have to do our best today based on what we know we need. And so I wouldn't want to be presumptuous and think that, you know, this room over here is gonna turn into this room over here. I don't think that's important. What I think it, you know, what's important is that we agree on the broad strokes and what we think the community supports, but also what we need now and in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Right, Amy?
I just wanted to say that I was lucky enough to serve on several of the core planning teams for the elementary school projects. And it's a great experience. The really key people get together. It gets really down into the details and a lot of creative ideas come out of it. It's truly a creative process. It's not just, you know, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. And I, I just want to say there's a lot that happens during that process and Sal's really good at it. And she manages to bring out the ideas from all of the people involved and make them into physical buildings. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Amy. Any other comments or questions for Sal around this topic, Jeff? Do you have another comment on this?
No.
No? Okay, let me get back to you then, okay? Of course.
Thanks, Sal, for the additional information.
You're welcome.
When you get ready to submit, or when you have submitted those 100-page-plus documents, those reports to MDE for review and comments, ballpark, what percentage of them have been approved in your career?
100.
Thank you.
Is it still on this topic, Jeff?
I'm actually only aware, I think, of two or three in the past 15 years, the Department of Education. So usually you come to some agreement with them and work to modify the plan. I'm only aware of very, very few, beyond even my company, that have been sent as inadvisable. What I would say is that the Department of Education really relies on people like you all to understand your community and their needs. So they're really looking for major red flags, not how big did you decide to make this exact room, right? That's not really the level of review they're doing. They're looking to make sure that you've gone through a meaningful, actually, a lot of this middle is the process that you used to arrive at the plan. And do you have a rationale? And so they, they don't typically get involved in that level of detail.
That's helpful.
Yep.
Jeff, did you want to make a comment about Jenny's?
Yeah, I was just wondering on the, the, one of the, the D wing and the M wing, from what I understand, I mean, they're pretty well insulated and they're like a 10. And I'm just kind of wondering, to me, it's like that, that never was mentioned is like the, you know, you're tearing down a lot of things that I think have a lot of value left personally.
The M wing and the D wing both do have better insulation. They don't have the space for ductwork appropriately. So they, for whatever reason, designed at that time, really chose to match heights, right? Sometimes that's done for aesthetic reasons. Sometimes that's done to avoid putting snow load onto old roofs. So when you build a tall building next to a shorter building, that's a really big structural challenge. So I don't know why those decisions were made at that time, but yes, those buildings or those parts of the building are compliant with the code at which they were built. So in the, I think the last energy code update they would have hit was like the 98, 99 timeline. Yep. The fact.
Right. Noel, did you have a comment for Sal or a question?
Yep, I've consolidated my opinions into eight bullet statements. So here goes.
Oh, can you pull the, can you pull the microphone?
Noel, if I could just wrap up this piece with Sal and, and some of Jenny's concerns. And then I will call on you. And I appreciate that you're prepared with some points. I, I like to be prepared too. So with a written script, so I'll be right back to you. Jen, did any other responses that you heard now address any of the concerns that you had? Do you feel more open to option two? I'm trying to build consensus tonight and get to a, a vote later tonight. So I just wanna, I appreciate everything that you're sharing and I want to give you space for that. And I, I want to hear more.
Thank you very much, Claudia. That's very generous to give me kind of that extra time. Yes, after hearing kind of from a lot of the other board members and from Sal, I feel that we keep kind of pushing the students' needs down below, trying to get this, you know, done. And, and we're just not taking, we haven't been taking the time to think about the students, I think, should be first and foremost. And we're just, you know, it, it's almost like I'm hearing, you know, well, if, if we can get the space summary report approved by the MDE, okay, good, you know, let's go. I just, that really disappoints me because we're not pausing to think about the students' needs and to think about, you know, are they going to want to us to expand our career in technical education areas? And are the special ed students, you know, do, do they deserve to have more space than what, you know, kind of that minimum is? And, and do they want that? And do their parents want that? You know, it's just things that we haven't discussed. I think that we, and I understand it's a business meeting, but it's a school and we always say, you know, like, we do good things for kids. That's stuck with me. And so I'm sticking to my, my opinion.
And your opinion, to be clear, is that you're?
Is that I just can't support this without that option for future expansion.
Can you say more about that future expansion meaning?
Um, just meaning like what the Department of Education was talking about, where you, you don't dedicate areas and as much. And of course, as Sal mentioned, you know, the design process is very intensive and, and long. But I can see that from the model and from the square footage per student allowed, per, per student right now with that model, that it's just not going to allow that room for expansion within the classrooms as, as during the design process. I mean, the design process is, is not going to give us more, more space, if that makes sense. Then, then what was in the budget, as Sal had, had, had stated, you know, she has a budget and we have a budget. And so we, we won't be able to just create additional square footage.
Okay, Ben, do you want to make a comment?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Right. I think that the space summary gave defined square footage, but how that square footage is used is part of the design process, correct?
Yes. What I would say is it's not typical, I would say, to get a series of stakeholders in a room and say, who wants what, right? Because then, of course, there's advocacy for one's own department. So typically, the which spaces we have is done more at like an administrative level. So probably the leadership of the district high school administration, things of that nature. But yes, when there comes a time of, gosh, we wish we could have one more of these, then we would all analyze, you know, is there any savings by reducing the size of some of these? Or maybe, maybe we actually have an excess somewhere that hasn't been brought up. So those decisions would get made during the design process. Yep.
And that process is usually done, like you said, by the administration?
I would say most typically, correct. Yep. Just that you would want a group that really has ownership over the, the budget. And it's not typical to put the ownership of, over the budget across all stakeholders, right? So you'd want to keep that with a, over. So for example, for the last bond referendum, we had a, what do we call it? Was it a project oversight committee? Bond oversight committee? I was trying to remember the name of it. Bond oversight committee. So anytime we had any topics, it would go to that group. So that was Director of Facilities, Dr. Hillman, Val was on it, Anita came, we had principals come occasionally, ourselves, Knutson, board members. And so we'd kind of review, in that case, there were lots of projects. But we would review the status of projects and maybe space requests by certain groups and what are we gonna do about them? And is there anything in the, in the total picture of funding that we can do to help with that problem? And I am, I am confident that there will be requests that come up during the design process that haven't been discussed yet. It's human nature, but.
But it sounds like that's.
I would say it's normal.
Right. And it's engaged in by a group of people with expertise and
Correct.
education and understand what the requirements are, both legal and regulatory and best practice.
Yep.
Industry, from an educational standpoint. So it sounds like a good group to be considering that when we get to that point in the process.
Could I make one comment here?
Yes.
I, I really appreciate the discussion about flexibility. And I just thought I'd offer my educational perspective on it. So when you look at a space summary, for example, there have been some listing of various classrooms, content areas. But the vast majority of those classrooms would be designed very similarly. There are spaces that are specialized, you know, so for example, there's an expansion of the family and consumer science program. So those spaces are outfitted with the equipment and those kinds of things that are specific to, so that, that space becomes less flexible because you have the equipment. But when we look at 900 square foot classrooms and you start to break them out by subject area, that's the subject area that we have today. The truth be told, the high school classrooms, if we hold alumni, many of those high school classrooms today have served very different functions, right? So that's one way to look at flexibility. What might be a social studies classroom in 2025 very well could be something, you know, very different, you know, in 2035. It's just you're, you're creating spaces that can be reinvented without a substantial amount of, of renovation, if you will. If we wanted to change the family consumer science area, that's gonna take, you know, that kind of renovation down the line. There are places in the high school right now that serve previous functions in the past. And the, the one that's most notable to me is the space that was originally a sunken lecture, lecture hall that then was filled in and four new classrooms created. That was an example of how that space wasn't flexible enough anymore for those items. So one of the core pieces of the entire process going back to 2022 was around flexibility. So I invite board members to consider that in a general 900 square foot classroom, right? It may be assigned a job today. That job could change. And in addition, I think the one thing that we've really learned about flexibility is it's about more than just the 900 square foot classroom. It's about the spaces that are outside of it. So for people who have toured the high school, you have seen how we have done some pieces to try to make the existing flex, or existing layout more flexible. It's a challenging thing to do in that kind of environment. But I think our students would say, when you look at the students and you walk past, students are using whatever space is more flexible that is in the direct instruction classroom. So if you think about a new classroom addition, and I invite you to consider, I, I really do believe that past performance predicts future success. And if we think about the last several construction projects in this district, going back to 2002, we think about how the middle school was, was designed with, you know, classroom pods with that flexible space in the middle that can be reinvented. When I walk through the middle school each week, some weeks I see an entire class of sixth graders out there with an activity with their teachers. Sometimes there's tutors in that area. That's another, I invite you to consider, that's another method of flexibility that is there. And when we look at the 2018 projects, we think about Greenville Park, which is the exact same partnership we're talking about here. I, I would argue that that's an incredibly flexible space. You've got the general classrooms. You have that space outside of the classroom, smaller, obviously than the middle school, because there's fewer students. But on any given week, Friday mornings, I know that Mrs. Sickler is gonna be singing that happy birthday song to the fifth graders in that flexible space outside those classrooms. I walk downstairs, I'm seeing tutoring, I'm seeing students gathering to do small group projects. And I think even the, the places where we've done some additions, at Spring Creek, you've seen that and the renovation part of that media center and the flex lab and how they did that. So I, I, I know that when we look at, this is what this classroom is, is assigned to today. That's its job today. But it can reinvent itself over time with minimal investment. And then it is about, I personally believe it's about a lot of the other spaces that I think I wholeheartedly believe the entire building is a learning area. So whether it be an expanded commons or cafeteria or the way that we not just designed the 900 square foot classroom, but the space outside of that 900 square foot classroom. It's about how we think about renovating the auditorium space. It's about what we do with the current music spaces. So I would, I would just invite the concept that flexibility is, is, is much more than what we have right now listed as the current jobs for the classroom. It's a fair point. If you look at it in that way, yes, there's little flexibility because there's all sorts of things that are assigned there. But this is my role to make sure that we deliver that. And I, I do feel comfortable that we would be able to use the spaces flexibly. There are some improvements, of course, and career technical education would get substantial investment. There are some things that we don't have in there that maybe some other schools do. But I think there are some flexible, there's quite a bit of flexibility in the previous three or four designs that we've done. And I think you've got the same team, you know, who'd be working on this as the previous one. So I would hope that our previous work would speak for itself. But I do understand translating it from, you know, the space summary, right, to the vision and what, how it will end up and whenever, what year it opens, I do think we have a good track record of delivering.
Okay. Ben, comment?
Yeah, I do want to just make an additional comment, just as reflection. You know, I think it was said that we're not considering the students as part of this process. And I would tend to, I will look at my district youth council representative here, because I have the privilege of being part of that group. And you know, certainly we've been, been engaged with the district youth council throughout this process. They conducted a survey. They surveyed students at the high school. They give us a good sense, or those of us, those that serve honor, I guess I'm the representative to the DYC. So get a good sense that I've brought back to the board here in terms of what they see as important. And, you know, we had a listening session last week at the high school where students came and shared their thoughts, asked questions. They were very engaged, good questions. So, you know, I think we've taken the input of the students and we do understand what's important to them. And I will say, you know, doing nothing is not what they want. Like, I think that's a pretty clear message. They understand the limitations of the current building. They understand the good things about the current building as well, you know, but simply not doing something isn't gonna solve the problems that they would like us to solve on their behalf. So I think that's why it's important to look at what we can do for them and for, you know, future students as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Comment? No? Jenny, do you feel like some of your concerns have been answered now regarding the flexible space that Dr. Hillman was describing?
Yeah, I I definitely think there are a lot of promises there. And I just, I can't, I can't vote for this large, I mean, it's the largest ask for a single building in our in the history of our district. And I can't vote that way with promises and, you know, with people speculating and and saying, well, we should be able to do this with this large of an ask. I just can't go off of promises.
Okay, thanks again for your honesty and sharing openly like that. I am going to keep asking the rest of the board members. I know that Noel had some prepared statements, so I'm gonna let him share. And Jeff, if you have any comments, we can get to you after Noel.
I have reduced my thoughts into eight bullet statements. One is, accept that enrollment is declining. Secondly, keep the building. Thirdly, define our needs and our goals and price out each of the options accordingly. Follow the survey guidelines. Give the voters at least two options. Decide on how far we can go and still stay within the funding guidelines. And lastly, tell me what's going, what the what student learning is going to look like in the next 10 years. And then we'll be better able to answer the needs right now.
Okay.
These are the things that I think about.
Thank you, Noel. Noel, and as you thought through those eight bullet points and and brought those before us tonight, are you able to say specifically to help us form that motion that we're going to take later tonight? Are you able to speak towards bond length? Or you said two questions. And are you sitting comfortable with the reimagine option?
I haven't heard, I haven't heard the statement.
Okay.
When I see, when I hear the language, I'll decide.
Okay.
It would be inappropriate if I decided ahead of time.
Okay. All right. Jeff, are you ready to share?
Thanks for everybody's comments so far. Noel, I'd also like to thank you for all your service on the board and your historical overview of all of the past people that have been, past board members that have been on boards over the years. And I know that early on, from the 60s on through the 70s, 80s, 90s and beyond, that they do the best they can. And I just think that I appreciate that. And I think that we're lucky to have you here, like, really almost as a historian and stuff. I'm not going to pick on your words. I think that that whatever you want to say is is wonderful. One thing, and I would say just about where we're at, is the first, the first word that I come up with is is kind of chaos. And I I think that this is a terrible campaign cycle to kind of do anything for a major bond. I mean, I mean, but on the other hand, don't get me started on an off year special election. So just don't, I mean, don't go there. So what I'm saying is, you know, whether we, whatever comes up with the motion, you know, we'll go from there when we get there. I would say, you know, with the with the chaos part of it, the national election, I mean, Northfield people, from what I talked to, I mean, they're just really upset about bike trails, high taxes, you know, like anything else, the inflationary parts of that. And they're just, they're just not, they're kind of angry, the people I've talked to. And I, I, the other part that I talked to some alumni that I know, and I said, well, how do you, how do you feel about tearing down the majority of the high school? I mean, it's 100,000 square feet. And that's, I mean, the the high school is 270,000 square feet and 100 of that was in six additions. So it's kind of like, they almost think that I was joking, like it was a joke. Like, no, they're thinking about that. But I I would say about, you know, being alumni, and I, and I, I mean, some of you, you know, none of you here are alumni, but you've got kids that are alumni, so I appreciate that. But there is really a core sector and a belief going way back from whatever. And a lot of these, what I call them NHSers, I mean, we really kind of stick together, but we really don't say much in a lot of times. So it's just kind of like, I think that's a really tough sell. And I kind of went from, I mean, the other one is is just kind of shocked. I mean, that would be my other word is just shocked. When I looked at what we were looking at for options, you know, we we went from, we went from tune up to teardown. We went from a tune up to a teardown. I thought we were looking at doing something with the school, to to do something with the HVAC, do something, you know, with the the lights and and just kind of give it kind of a little bit of a facelift and kind of move forward. Really, when I look at this map, I think it's a lot of that is just kind of, and I'm not saying long term, that, you know, maybe consider some other options, even in the next cycle, could be a couple of years away. But when I look at this, and I study this a little bit more, and I think of Northfield people, and I think of the money that they put into all of these wings, I just think that the expectation for those buildings to last longer is is very, very much there. I think even within the D or the M or whatever, I mean, they they're thinking like in the 2020 40s. I mean, the building is structurally sound, I mean, the entire thing, a 100 year building. You know, you've got, again, going back, as I've said this before, and I I mentioned this in a bullet point to people, you know, you've got room and square footage here for 1,700 kids. And and even with the way the classrooms are, yeah, you can configure a little bit. You know, I'm not saying everything's perfect, which it certainly isn't, but I was just really kind of shocked to go from the tune up to the teardown. And I just think that there's got to be other parts in there. And I think that I'm not, I'm not on the the reimagine team here, what you're calling that. I'm I'm kind of more of, and I've said this before, but, you know, the number that I had was was kind of the, the tune up would have been like the 36 million and then another 18. But I think that, and and I've always been a promoter of the expanded gym and field house. I've been there for years. I probably could have got that done years, few years back for about 10, or even less when I got on the board. But we never did kind of move down that trail. So I I don't know, and this, this isn't necessarily going to go anywhere, but I I think that if I had a first question and a second question, my first question would be, let's just put, you know, 40 million on the table and 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 use that very wisely as, you know, and I've talked to Matt, and there's really no such thing as a maintenance bond. It's just you do, you do maintenance. So we figure out maintenance, figure out, make that first step first, instead of just paring everything down, because I I I think that that's a very slippery slope to go down. And I just think that the the taxpayers and the people that I talk to are looking for more life to get out of the building that they've got. I mean, I could rant on other things, but I think I think I'll kind of leave it at that, just kind of, you know, end with that as far, because you, that's kind of what I said before anyway. So, but I I thank, thank you all for all your feedback.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any other comments other board members want to make at this point? Otherwise, I will make my comments, which are very similar to what I've heard Corey and Ben express. But if Amy or Jenny or Noel, you want to make any other additional comments tonight? We're hoping to build some consensus towards a vote tonight, and so we'll process through that.
So as I said, my comments are very similar. My feeling is very similar. I have a lot of trust in the the consultants that we're using. I have a lot of trust in the administration that supports us. I appreciated the picture of the picture of the, I think she said, like, bonding for the clay, and then the design comes after that. And so there's this idea of not putting something, the the referendum is not going to have very specific language about how many classrooms or how big something is, but this idea of getting a new classroom space that is well insulated, that it has better lighting, that can be opened up to become more than one classroom or to be used for different subjects. So I'm very comfortable with that reimagine option, which includes the multi-story classroom. In terms of the remodeling, I I also feel very comfortable hearing that the cafeteria will be remodeled, that the gym, there'll be the, I don't have a problem with the demolition of some of those wings. They, keeping them doesn't answer the question of insulation and of inefficient heating and air. And so I feel comfortable seeing those portions demolished. Even the the M wing that was a stopgap measure 30 years ago, did the best that they could at the time. You know, that is a situation of what my husband likes to call sunk costs. So it's that the money has already been spent, but what we need is something different. And so we don't keep patching up that piece just because we already invested 30 years ago. That's where I sit with that. I'm interested in a version of the option of the reimagine plan. And then for cost sake, as others have mentioned, question, three questions. The first one at 95, approximately 95 million, the survey showed support from voters at this level for this item. And so I have a trust, I trust in that that survey. There was overall support for the, there's overall support for addressing the high school dilemma, meaning that the community wants to see us put something forward and not not the community wants to see us put something on the ballot this year is what I'm getting at. And that support was solid across demographics, wards, Dundas and the townships. There was a lot of support for addressing security, and that goes back to those wings and the academic building being more secure, less entrances. Also, and Jenny talked quite a bit about the special education spaces, the community was very interested in that. And I, again, I I feel like that question is is answered in the fact that those classrooms can be opened up, that there's spaces outside of the classrooms. And so I feel like the needs of our special education students, which you're correct, are increasing, are going to be addressed. Also, the accessibility improvement is key. And that HVAC is not just about insulation and windows. It's about the equipment properly protected from the elements. And so the the idea that the ductwork can't be, you know, properly protected is important to consider. And there was also support in the survey for a range of around 315 to 325, which puts us squarely in that ask. I feel that three questions allows the voters to have choice. And I think that the geothermal idea is an interesting green piece, but again, is a separate question. So that would be the third question for me. That allows the voters to decide on investing in green energy and the return on investing, investment needing further understanding. The reimagine option gets our community better security, better education spaces, new classrooms for academic needs, including classes focused on preparing students for work immediately after high school, the flexible learning spaces, better lighting, both natural and LED, better mobile accessibility for all abilities, remodeled gym, cafeteria, and then new possibilities for the B wing, and a superior model of heating and cooling with better window and wall insulation. All of those are very exciting to me. And so I'm full supportive of the reimagine option. And the demolition of the D, H, M and S wings yields new possibilities for those reclaimed spaces and allows the academic building full of classroom space to meet the needs of every student and teacher most of the day. I think it's a wonderful combination of new construction, preserving quality spaces and leaving room for future additions. So that's where I stand there. I did ask if you had any final comments. People didn't seem to respond, but if you've changed your mind, go ahead. Noel?
For Dr. Hillman. What is the impact if we table this for two weeks?
Well, we can't table it for two weeks because we don't have another board meeting in March. So you'd essentially be tabling it for a month.
For a month. Cool. I rephrase, I rephrase my question. We table it for a month.
So, of course, we would execute whatever the board's will is. We have intentionally created this timeline very thoughtfully to make sure that we are taken into account of number of things working backwards from November 5. So just because you ask, I'll explain. We come back from November 5. Early voting begins two weeks after school starts. So that means that the a traditional bond information campaign of whatever the board decided to do typically would have started right around a school began. We no longer have that luxury. We know that we anticipate that there will be a record amount of early voting in the fall, Noel. And so as we start to back that up, we know that June and July and even part of August are not optimal for educating the community on this topic. So now we're back into June, May and April. So the reason that we had selected tonight is the night to make the decision is that it allows us the time then to start working on the review and comment. There was a legislative change that requires the review and comment a longer timeframe for the review and comment to be completed. That's different than the last time that we did it. We really want to be, if whatever the board decides, we want to begin educating the community in April and May before the end of the school year, because we also know, as Jeff alluded to, the fall is going to be filled with the presidential election information, campaigning, et cetera. So we've really intentionally done a very long runway from October until tonight to be able to help people get to a point where they could make a decision. So we could then begin executing the process, working with the bond attorney, determining what, how the questions are done, getting the review and comment completed and submitted, beginning to hold informational sessions for people in April and May before the end of the school year. So the impact of waiting one month simply means that we just have that later start on this. And so realistically, we wouldn't really be able to fully get our informational campaign going until probably early May. It also reduces the amount of time that we would have to complete the review and comment project. Those are the impacts of waiting. Is it, we will execute whatever you ask us to execute. But the the current timeline was very intentionally and thoughtfully considered to set us up that we had the best opportunity to make sure people were ready to vote two weeks after school starts if they chose early voting.
Well, the reason that I ask is that we've heard a huge, a huge amount of information tonight. And and I don't know that any of it is new, but it seems to have come together tonight in a way that allows us to be thoughtful. And traditionally, we don't vote tonight and we get the information. We usually get the information and vote at the next meeting. And I'm apprehensive about voting with what the information I've heard tonight and how it, I'd like, I need more time to process, but I'm maybe unique.
Yeah, Noel, we we've done the best we can to try to really thoughtfully meter out the information so that it was able to come to a crescendo, if you will, to use a term I know you appreciate, tonight. So I'm I'm sorry, I would have never wanted to put you in that position, Noel. So we really did the best we could to have a number of opportunities for people to bring this together. So we will, of course, execute what the will of the board, as we always do. So I apologize to you, Noel, if we didn't meet that mark. Our our goal was to meter it out over time so that it could all come together tonight in a vote.
You did exactly what we had expected you would do. What changed is that I think we've heard a lot of information tonight that I'd like to process a little bit more.
Corey?
I would respectfully disagree that we heard any new information tonight. I would respectfully disagree that we heard new information tonight. There was one board member with questions and fair to have those questions, and I feel that they were answered tonight. I don't think it was necessarily new information to the conversation. I'd also remind the board that we were supposed to vote on this two weeks ago, and it's already been delayed once. And we've had this conversation for five months, this go around, we talked about for a year in 2022. I think we need to have a vote tonight. And I have every intention to be here until we have a solution.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ben?
Yeah, I mean, I would concur with Corey. I don't think we've heard any new information to me tonight. I know many of us have been engaged in this process all throughout since the beginning of November, really listening and taking in a lot of information. So, you know, sometimes, you know, it would always be nice to have more time sometimes, but I think my concern, as Dr. Hillman has articulated, is that, you know, in order to make sure that the community is educated around what the decision of the board is this evening, that we have ample time to go out and inform the community about what the shape of these proposals looks like. And that's important time that we have between now and when early voting starts in September of 2024. So. Leave it at that.
Noel?
One of the things that would help me be clear about what I'm voting on is to be, see it in writing.
Okay, we can do that.
And and I, we don't have that, do we?
We we will. We, we will have it in writing tonight. Thank you for that request.
Thank you for that request. Anyone else? Amy?
I am just thinking of Noel's request and I understand where you're coming from, but when I look at the timeline that Dr. Hillman described, I think it's not, if we delayed for a month, we, we don't lose the first month of getting the word out. We lose the last month. And it grows, as information gets out in the community and more and more just people are discussing, that grows to a crescendo as well. And so we lose a lot more by skipping this first month. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to get the information you need tonight. And when you see it in writing, that'll help inform your decision, Noel.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Okay, thank you to each of you for sharing. We will be getting on a vote later in the agenda tonight. We're at item D, we have item D and E and then the consent agenda before our vote tonight. Item D is the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Report. Superintendent Hillman will share the latest report from the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee and its vote of concurrence.
Yes, very briefly, Hope Langston, Director of Instructional Service and our Indigenous Cultural Liaison, Sybil Bessinger, gave a very thorough presentation at the last board meeting. Since then, they have also convened the committee again and taken the annual required vote. That committee needs to vote either a vote of concurrence or a vote of not, a resolution of concurrence or a resolution of non-concurrence in terms of the school district meeting the needs of our indigenous students. That committee met and did vote in the affirmative, so we have a vote of concurrence. We are required simply to report that to you, or we're not, you're not required to actually act on it, but we're required to report it to you. And then Claudia will sign the document afterwards and we'll make the submission to the Department of Education. So that is all we have tonight. You heard the bulk of the report the last time, but we had some issues with that meeting, just not having people attend. And so they were able to attend at a later date. So that piece has been concluded and we'll complete the process tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Item E is the Policy Committee Recommendation. Dr. Hillman will present the Policy Committee's Recommendation to Sunset Policy 723. This is an item for individual action at the next board meeting.
Yes, so as we are now really have the Policy Committee rolling, right? The Policy Committee meets regularly, monthly. And for the first several years of that committee, we were doing really deep work around bringing the policies into alignment. We have, we adopted a style guide, a number of those things. And as we've gone through it again, we are starting to look at more deeply, are there policies that are redundant? Are there policies that were adopted again with good intention at a time that might now be captured in something else? And so Policy 723 around electronic communications, one of those that I'm sure was adopted at the beginning of when the district began using email. And so there were some pieces around electronic communication at that time. Those guidelines and those requirements are really within the telecommunications policy that we also have. This is redundant and we believe that it is time for it to be sunset. So as you can see, it's a very simple policy that is really incorporated elsewhere. So the Policy Committee has just determined that we recommend that we sunset this policy so that we can again streamline, so we're looking at one place for information about particular topics like this.
Okay, thank you. Item six is our consent agenda. As a reminder, there were some personal items in the table file added to this consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Move by Jeff, second. Hi Jenny? Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're now on to items for individual action. I will now begin to, I will now accept a motion for the board to consider. Dr. Hillman will put the motion on the screen for all to see. We will take a roll call vote with Anita facilitating. While Anita typically calls on us alphabetically, I've asked her to call on me last. In the event of a tie, I can be that tiebreaker. Please turn on your mic when you are called. Okay. Would a board member like to propose a motion? Ben?
All right. I move that the district place a bond referendum election on the November fifth, 2024 ballot that includes option two, the reimagine option, the athletic field house and the geothermal system using a three questions selected from the bond referendum project options list with a bond length of up to thirty years.
Okay, I'm going to give Dr. Hillman a moment to update the screen there.
I'm going to remind all people at this time, my ability to type is inversely proportional to the number of people watching me. So please correct me as time goes on. Am I getting it right, Ben, so far? Yep, I got that, thanks.
Yeah. I don't know if it helps to call it the reimagine option or not.
I think it's eighteen point six.
Eighteen point eight.
Eighteen point eight, thank you.
The athletic field house.
And ninety-five point eight for the first one, right? Or six?
Correct, eight. Seven. That's up to thirty years.
Up to thirty years.
That's part of it.
Yeah, that would be part of my motion would be that the two would be contingent on one and three is contingent on two and one.
Does that capture what you're looking at there? I think I'll change this to motion to direct.
May I say about three is that it's contingent on voter approval of the first and second questions?
Can everybody see that? Okay, I'm just making sure I've got it big enough. Okay.
Sorry, Tom. Being a little distracting in the audience, please. Okay, so the motion is on the screen. Hopefully, everybody can read it. Okay, I'm going to read it. It's a motion that Ben is bringing forward and then I'll ask for a second. Typically, then I get that second, then I open it up again for discussion and then we take a vote. Anita's going to take a roll call vote, so she'll call on everyone at that point and I will be called on last.
Point, point of information. So when we say bond term up to thirty years, so I mean, you typically would talk twenty, twenty-five or thirty, we want that in there. I mean, when you total all of that up at a, at a twenty-year bond, you're already up around one ninety. And if you do twenty-five or thirty, you're going to be over two hundred million with interest. But I'm just wondering, so is the motion, do we want to decide if you're going that way? Do you want to put in there and decide whether it's twenty, twenty-five or thirty? Because I think that if you just told people what the difference in interest would be, that would help.
Dr. Hillman, do you want to make a comment about that?
Yeah, so I, and I, Jeff Seeley from LRS is here, should we need anything further? The reason that it's important for me anyway, from the informational campaign perspective, Jeff, to have the bond term, the intended bond term, is that part of the education campaign is producing a tax impact statement. So in order to be able to produce a tax impact statement that people can look at their house and know what the maximum amount it could cost them would be, that's why the bond term length is important. You go up, you can say up to the bond term length in this discussion because on bid day, depending on the interest rate, you know, a game time decision could be made to say, you know, we can do this at twenty-seven years for the same cost, you know, to the individual homeowner. So I think I described that correctly, Jeff.
Yes, yes, very good.
And so that's, that's the reason, Jeff, that we would like to determine the bond length because that's important to be able to help the voters understand what the impact would be for them. In this case, it's a, the suggestion is thirty years, but you're right, those can go from anywhere, typically twenty to thirty years. I'd let other board members talk why they wanted to determine thinking about thirty.
And then for the record, have we ever had a thirty-year bond? Everything we've ever had has been twenty, but I'm, I'm just, I'm guessing, I've been thinking that that's true. But it brings the payment way up, but it also brings the interest way up too. So I mean, you're well over thirty-year bond, you're well over two hundred million.
What I'm gonna, what I'm gonna ask Jeff is that we have a motion. We're gonna get, I'm gonna ask for a second. And then when I open it up for discussion, we can talk through that again. And then we can, you know, process through that and determine what we're going to do next. Okay, so the motion put before us, and I am going to read the whole thing. So here we go. The motion is to direct the administration to prepare a bond referendum for November fifth, 2024. That includes three questions. Question one would be up to ninety-five point eight million to support the reimagine option. Question two, up to eighteen point eight million to support the construction of a field house contingent on voter approval of the first question. Question three, up to seven million to support the installation of geothermal system at Northfield High School contingent on voter approval of the first and the second questions. The bond term would be for up to thirty years. Is there a second on this motion? Okay, second by Corey. Is there any discussion that the board members would like to have before Anita takes a roll call vote? Jeff?
Just on the roll call, I mean, I'm going to be a no vote on this. I mean, I'm no, so how are you phrasing that? So it's just, that's either up or down, so it's either.
This is up or down, correct.
Okay, okay, so, okay.
Any, any other discussion, Noel?
I have a question regarding why the second question is, is contingent on approval of the first question? Why the second, the third question is approval of the second question?
Sure.
For example, in, in my mind, a geothermal system could stand alone. And that might be true of the field house too, it could, could be a standalone question.
Okay, that's something you could answer, Dr. Hillman, or?
Well, I, I think what we're into there is preference of, of how you look at it. So the concept of standalone questions versus contingent questions is this. So I'll give you an example. Let's say that each of these were standalone as is. The implementation of a geothermal system makes the most sense in concert with updates to the rest of the building. So under that concept, what could happen is, let's hypothetically say, question one and question two are not approved by the voters, but question three is. Now you have the potential for a geothermal system interfacing with an older HVACs, which I'm, I'm sure people can figure out, but it does, it would not be the optimal way to do that. So the concept of contingent questions is that you as a board are determining in what order, frankly, are the most important things to you. That's the only way that you, you say, here's what are, what we believe our most important item is. Here's what we think our second most important item is, and here's what our third most important item. And to communicate that a community that we will only consider question two if question one passes so that it becomes more of a package circumstance. Again, you can, there, there are times when you want to do standalone questions. So you, you certainly can. The issue with the standalone is then you, you, you may get something, but maybe not the core piece that people, heard a lot of people talk tonight about the academic, the addition, being a very primary piece, all of it being lots of good things. But the concept of contingent would be that you are prioritizing for the voters and that question two and question three can't pass unless it's really developing a full package, if you will, Noel. Standalone questions are certainly permissible. I, I give you the example of question three, that would be a little awkward if question three passed, but the other two didn't because you really wouldn't be able to make effective use of the system at that point.
Go ahead.
What is, what are the components of question one? Is it, you know, one of my issues is I want to make sure there's no confusion about what people are voting for.
So my understanding of question number one would be when we think about the reimagine optional, that would be the construction of a multi-story academic addition to the school. It would be demolition of the HDS and M wings and renovation of the remaining spaces.
But that won't be on the ballot.
No, so that, so, so that, that's a great question, if I can address that now. So when you are taking this motion, you are directing us to begin executing the process. The next part of the process would be bringing in, one of the next parts of the process would be using a bond attorney to frame the questions. And so the frame, framing of the questions, and I'll ask Sal if she can step to the podium just to help me answer this. What you typically will see, there's a very formulaic way in which the bond attorneys construct these questions. So you wouldn't see HDS and M wings on the ballot typically. It would be for new construction, repair and renovation of the Northfield High School facility or something similar. Sal has a lot of experience with this. This is my understanding, I'd like her to, to share how these typically go because she sees a dozen of them a year and, you know, we do one every couple of years.
Correct, not a bond attorney, I just want to clarify, of course. But the verbiage I would typically see would be, so that your plan, I would imagine, would be captured in phrasing such as various additions and renovations to the existing Northfield High School, including new construction and demolition, something, you know, as, as broad as that. Of course, you all, privy to the budgets that we and Knutson have been providing to you, can see how we've arrived at that ninety-five point eight million dollar number. And Dr. Hillman, I did send you an email moments ago if anyone wanted to see exactly how we got to that number. If anyone's not tracking how we got to ninety-five point eight, it is a series of line items, you know, first is the demolition of those four wings. Then there's the new construction of the, about a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. Then we have an allocation to harden some of that square feet into a storm shelter. Then, as indicated, there's various renovations to the rest of the building. So there's the uninsulated envelope, there's the auditorium renovation, V wing renovation, light renovation of a few of the remaining spaces. So it's listed as media center and other remaining space, the cafeteria is a part of that. The gymnasiums, music and locker room renovation. We've got an allocation for some more kitchen equipment, recognizing some of your kitchen equipment is in perfectly good shape. Then we've got an allocation for new flexible furniture throughout the entire facility. I do have a breakdown of that if anyone wants to see that. The reconstruction and reimagining of the parking lot. And last but not least, reconstruction of the tennis courts, oh, excuse me. So that's how those line items are how we get to that ninety-five point eight, but it would be highly unusual for the ballot language to get into this level of detail. It would most likely just ask for voter approval to do additions and renovations to the existing building, right? So.
And I think if you think about the, the motion, or excuse me, the ballot language, the motion to direct administration to prepare, then there is the ballot language and you, of course, have to approve that as well when we get the ballot language. And so if you think about, for example, something like the Spring Creek project, you know, that was part, it was, again, we talked about additions and renovations to Spring Creek and to Bridgewater. So there was new construction of Greenbale Park. And then it talked about that renovation, addition and renovation and other improvements at Spring Creek. That's how the bond language is typically written. That's how the bond language is typically written. What we do tonight is give us the direction as to how to begin to prepare that. Narrowing from six options down to one.
Any other comments in this discussion period, comments or questions? Ben?
I'll just clarify the reason for me why I think structuring the questions in this order are important. One, I think we heard in public comment tonight that, you know, having that first question be less than a hundred million dollars and giving the voters that choice is important as part of the reimagine option. And then, you know, I think, while many of us support the value of a fieldhouse, certainly, you know, it allows the voters to decide if that's something that they would go beyond that hundred, you know, ninety-five point eight million. We do know from the survey that we have that level of support within the community right around ninety-five point eight million. So here we have a motion that I think gives voters choice. It gets us the core of what we're asking for and what we need. And, you know, I think the geothermal question, it's, it's one that's there. And one we can speak to in the educational campaign as well.
Could, could we ask Sal's opinion on the ability for standalone on geothermal?
I wanted to ask, address that, I was gonna actually ask for permission to talk about it. So when we created that budget, it was, I believe it was phrases, what would it take to add geothermal to the budgets we've been pondering, right? Which in various ways, all reconstructed kind of your central plant. And so I would, I, I would recommend a different budget if you were only going to ponder adding geothermal, because as you indicated, your existing systems would not be plug and play with it, right? So this is not an all-in redo all the HVAC and make it geothermal. This is to take it from a modern mechanical system to a modern mechanical system with geothermal. The other comment I would make about if you were gonna make question two non-contingent in any way, is if we were in the maybe unlikely situation that only question two passed, you would then still have to make it a storm shelter. So then that comp, right now that money is in question one, but if, you're right, so that gets a little complicated. So what I would say, if, if you were in that scenario, you would actually have to probably build a smaller building to make some of it storm shelter. So that's where non-contingent questions, when some of the funding is in question one, like, it gets messy. Yep.
Okay.
I know we've been calling it a fieldhouse this whole time, but I'm wondering if it makes sense to base it more generally like additional athletic facilities? Because I think people, when they think of a fieldhouse, have ideas in their mind, which might not be exactly what we come up with. So I'm thinking, leave it more general and just in support of athletic facilities.
And that, would, would that come out in the ballot language, or is that something that needs to come out in the motion?
I'll ask, what do you think, Sal?
It certainly could. My only reaction to that is additional athletic facilities would be very open-ended and could be interpreted by some to be a new stadium or artificial turf or other intents that I don't think this board, board is actually intending. So there's, I'm sure there's a happy medium there somewhere of not being too prescriptive.
Right.
Yeah.
It, it, I'm open to any alternative to fieldhouse, I just think.
At terms.
St. Olaf has a fieldhouse, and Carlton has a fieldhouse, and they're both beautiful buildings. I don't think we're looking at building something at the same
I see.
Level.
Okay, Jeff?
We've had this discussion many times. I think that, you know, fieldhouse does say something different than expanded gyms. I mean, my suggestion would be fieldhouse slash expanded gym, because, I mean, what it, you know, so whatever, but I mean, that's kind of what I was thinking. But, I mean, I'm not voting for this anyway, but, so go ahead, whatever you wanna call it.
Well, and I, I, I do think that, Amy, you raise a good point, but this is also where there's the difference of you giving us direction. The bond language, right, which would be helped written by the attorney. And then I think the other important part to understand here is it would be our job as a district, no matter what you, whatever term you use, in this case, any of these terms, can be somewhat nebulous to people, right? We have, we have the curse of knowledge, we've been talking about this for a long time. Someone coming to the conversation on any of this, right, needs explanation. And that's what it's the district's job, you know, and the board's job, to be able to go out and explain to people, this is what the ballot language says, and this is the practical meaning of what you're going to get. So in my opinion, I think that for the purposes of the motion tonight, I think this is, is just fine. I think it's about us then being able to articulate, whatever term you put in there, you will have some, quite, because it's not, you know, there's, there's gonna be people that look at any term about athletic space, and if that's not your, your thing, right, you're gonna need some additional explanation. And our job is to make sure that we go out and explain that to people. So for example, in 2018, when this board approved, you know, the additions and renovations to buildings, we went out and explained what that would mean, you know, for each of the facilities. We would, you know, for example, at Spring Creek, we said it was gonna be a new cafeteria and a remodeled media center. At Bridgewater, we explained a new secure entrance and remodeling of the existing office space. At the NCEC, we explained we'd be renovating it to convert it into an early childhood center. So by the time people got to the vote, which is really what that part, the informational campaign, clearly with really solid voter support that night, we had done our job. And I do feel confident that we will be able to help. I think people will be sick of us telling them what this is, you know, that part will look like by the time we get to early voting in September. At least that's what I would hope.
Does that answer your concern, Amy? Any other comments, Noel?
Once, Dr. Hillman, once the, the, the language attorneys had had a chance to process this, do we see it again?
Yes, you do.
And vote?
Yes. You have to vote on the ballot language. Because that's part of the call for election.
Good question. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anita, will you facilitate a roll call vote? Thank you, Sal.
Butler?
Aye.
Hurwitz?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Nay.
Quinell?
Nay.
Stratmon?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye. Okay, I have five yeses and two noes. Motion passes. Congratulations, board members, you made a great decision tonight. Dr. Hillman, you heard your board pass their vote, and so we will send it to you now.
We will begin working on it. I just, if I can say to the community, I wanna thank people for coming out on this. We've had four tours of our high school, we've had a public meeting. We invited people to come to all sorts of things, we had the tour of the Oatana High School, we had four work sessions. We had people who weighed in, we had a phone survey. So I think that when we get to this point where the board has approved this moving forward, we can be proud of the community engagement that we did, which is actually unusual. This is a lot more community engagement before a vote than a lot of other scenarios. And I am really proud of the robust dialogue that this board has. It's one of the reasons I love working here, is that we are a model for vigorous debate and discussion and come to decisions. So I just, I thank you for being role models for what productive public discourse can look like. So thank you for giving us our orders, we will work to execute them to the best of our ability.
Very good, thank you so much. Thank you, board members. We'll move on to item eight, which is items for information. Item A is an enrollment report. Superintendent Hillman will review the March 2024 enrollment report.
So now that I know I can switch the video right here from the table, I, I can do my own stunts, which I really like. So I wanna just point out that we'll look at the bottom of this particular document, and you will see that we are, we grew a little bit last month as well. So we are right now thirty-four students over projection this year, which is a good place to be. We really hope that it continues that, that way into the future, but right now we're thirty-four above projection. I am also going to start showing at this, when we do the enrollment report, I'm gonna, just gonna call out the elementary classes. The second page of this enrollment report shows the class sizes at each elementary school in each classroom. And so I know that we've heard some discussion about this, was one of our budget priorities. We really work hard to try to balance all of the priorities that we were given as part of that five-year planning process. So I will start to show this particular slide. I think sometimes when we talk about averages of class sizes, you know, an average is an average, but someone who has nineteen versus someone who has twenty-six, that is different. So this is in the interest of transparency. We continue to work how we are able to promote this priority of class size in a way that also does not diminish the other priorities that the board has adopted. So I'm simply, when we do an enrollment report, I'm simply going to show you this next page so that we have that public opportunity to see. I think it's important for our staff to know that as a board, we're looking at this each month as well.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the enrollment report? Okay. Next item for information is our board workshops. The board has a workshop scheduled for Monday, March 18th, 2024, from five to nine PM here in the boardroom. And our next workshop is scheduled for Monday, July 22nd, five to nine, also here in this boardroom. Item nine is our future meetings. Monday, as I stated, is a workshop. Then Monday, April 8th, is a regular board meeting here in the boardroom. Monday, April 22nd, is a regular board meeting. Monday, May 13th, 6:00 PM, another regular board meeting. That is all the business that we have tonight. Congratulations, TG, for wrestling through this important issue and challenging each other, bringing up concerns and, and questions. We hand it over to our community now. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Jeff, second. Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.